Good evening. I'm going to call to order the November 18th, 2024 school committee meeting. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Master Mala chapter 30A, section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We will be adjourning to executive session and returning to open session at 6:30. Somebody want to make a motion?
I will make a motion to enter into executive session and to reconvene in open session pursuant to Master Mala chapter 30A, section 21A3, for the purposes of to discuss matters related to the Hingham Food Service Association Collective Bargaining Contracts for 2024-2025, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares.
I so declare.
And to approve minutes from the executive session held on October 15th, 2024, and November 4th, 2024, as an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position, and the chair so declares.
I so declare. What did you say, both names?
I said both names.
Sorry, I'm sorry. Okay. All right, all those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally? Jen?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Good evening. I am going to call to order, or recall to order, the November 18th, 2024 school committee meeting. Read this statement quickly. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Master Mala chapter 30A, section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. We have Harper Media recording this evening as well as recording on Zoom for minutes, purposes of the minutes. Is there anybody in the audience recording? Nope. Okay. So we started our meeting this evening at 6:00 and we adjourned into executive session. We are returning into open session. We have an action coming out of that. We have an agreement with the Food Services Association on collective bargaining, and when we have that, a member, the chair of the Selecta Board becomes a member of the school committee. So we have Joe Fisher joining us this evening. Thank you, Joe, for being here. And I thought I would give Carrie the honor of letting us know what was negotiated before we take a motion to vote.
Great. Thank you. So we have a tentative agreement between the Food Services Union and the School Committee on a one-year contract. This was done at the union's request because they're going through some, they're reorganizing themselves. So they wanted to have a one-year contract in place, and then we'll work on a longer one later this year. We met twice, and I just want to thank Joan Moore and her team for their collaboration and their thoughtful discussion. It was a pleasure to work with them. As you know, food services is a little different than the other unions because it is funded through the revolving account. So it has a kind of a net neutral effect on the operating budget. There are a few major changes. We did increase the wages at all levels, including the managers and assistant managers, to bring them up to a competitive market rate. This, we can afford that through the revolving account, and this will help us attract and retain the great people we have working in the department. We restructured the bonus. So the old bonus was a participation bonus, but with now free lunches for everyone, that doesn't really make sense. So this was, will be a performance bonus instead. So they will have to get a meet's expectations on evaluations to access that. And then there were a few other things. We added some paid holidays and defined the work year, I guess, with the two other ones. So it's 182 days. So it's a student school year plus two days at the beginning of the year. So we thought it was important to define that. So it's just such an important group of employees. We really, I mean, our students aren't going to be able to learn if they aren't fed and nourished. And so it was really clear the care and effort they put into it every day. So we're very grateful for that. So I just wanted to again thank Joan and her team, and also Superintendent Roberts, and Aisha Pong, Michelle, Ally, and especially Kim Smith, the Director of Food Services. She was extremely helpful in working through all of this. Does anyone have any questions or any questions?
All right. Thank you. And thank you to our negotiations and food services. We appreciate it. It's exciting that it was done too.
Yeah, it was great.
All right. Somebody want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement with the Hingham Food Service Association for contracts 2024 to 2025.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
Joe?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. Thank you. Joe, you're welcome to stay, but you don't need to. I appreciate you being here.
I appreciate all the work. This is a great job. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Moving over to item five, approval of the minutes. We've got two sets of minutes to approve this evening.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes from the school committee meeting held on October 15th, 2024.
Any discussion?
Yeah, I just had one thing. For the adjourning to executive session at the end, it doesn't, they don't reflect a roll call vote, which I know we did do. So if I could just add that, that would be helpful.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yeah, we can.
Doing that to Carrie's name lately.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the school committee meeting held on October 15th, 2024 with the amended changes.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
I'm an aye as well.
I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Hingham School Committee with Advisory Committee held on November 4th, 2024.
So discussion, I do have something that came up on this one. Under the minutes, there's the, we started talking about the dock and authorizing the superintendent and the dock pledge. It says that the items were to be tabled, which they were, but I think we had discussed it. So I thought we could move that and basically say that we had discussed it and reflect that in the minutes.
I can do that. And I'll make the same edit to this one, the last one.
No, but my motion was wrong. Because it says with advisory committee. It wasn't with advisory committee.
No.
So scratch my motion. I was just reading. Chair might make another motion. You may make another motion. I will make a motion to approve the minutes of the Hingham School Committee held on November 4th, 2024.
With the amended changes.
Thank you. Okay. All those in favor, Carrie?
Aye.
Michelle?
Aye.
Ally?
Aye.
Jen?
Aye.
Matt?
Aye.
And I'm an aye as well. All right, thank you. Okay, back to my agenda. Sorry. All right. Item six. So this is the part of the meeting where we have set aside 15 minutes to take questions and comments for things that are not on tonight's agenda. Before I go into reading the speech, does anybody have anything that they would like to bring up? All right, not seeing any. So I'm gonna jump over to item seven, which is the superintendent's report.
Okay. Well, thank you. Over the past few weeks, we have engaged in a variety of community outreach activities in order to increase our visibility in the community. So many thanks to Ness Karanti and Jen Benham, and Aisha O'Pong, who joined me last week at the Local Governance Academy. This is a new town initiative where community members can get to know our local town departments, including the school department. So we shared an overview of Hingham Public Schools programming and functions, did a tour of the Hingham High School, and then we had a surprise kind of cap to the evening where our community members were able to watch the Hingham High Jazz Band for her. So that was a great evening. On Saturday, November 9th, Heather Cashman and I hosted a table at the Hingham Farms Market. We enjoyed meeting current Hingham families and really enjoyed meeting some families that had much younger children who are not yet in the Hingham Public Schools. So got to meet those families that will be with us soon. And lastly, I did have a chance to meet with the Interfaith Clergy Group, who invited me to speak at one of their lunches. That group is working on a number of mental health initiatives that complement the work of the town and the schools. So it was nice to see that synergy and some of the commonalities of the projects that we were working on. Throughout the month of November, there were many school-based celebrations in honor of Veterans Day, including a terrific one at South School. So Tara Boning and Gendre School are here tonight, and we, it was so well-attended. Many community members, parents, grandparents, and extended community members who had served were there and were serenaded and very welcomed by our South School students. I similarly had a chance to attend the Veterans Day Assembly at Town Hall, where our high school band performed, and a high school chorus student, Nick Roach, actually performed as well and did a terrific solo. So thank you to our students and staff for organizing and participating in these ceremonies, and thank you, of course, to our veterans. Also, in the spirit of thanks, I wanted to thank the more than 750 students, staff, and family and community members who participated in the Portrait of a Graduate survey. So the steering committee will now take all of the data from that survey, as well as input that we sought through focus groups, and will compile that into a comprehensive Portrait of a Graduate document. As we look forward to sharing that document in late January, early February, and so stay tuned for updates on that. This week, the hottest ticket in town is, of course, for Hades Town. I hope I'm not stealing your thunder, Slater, on your student report tonight. But that performance kicks off on Thursday, Friday, and Saturday evenings, and we have over 60 Hingham High students involved in both the cast crew and the production team. So make sure to get your tickets for that event. In fall athletics, we are rounding out the fall season, and would like to thank coaches, captains, and players for all of their teamwork this fall. We, of course, are excited about the tournament play. We have one more team still in the tournament, and we are, of course, proud of the tournament play and championships. But we're most proud of the 80% participation rate that we have in high school athletics. And so congratulations to all of the participants in unified basketball, cross-country, rowing, crew, soccer, golf, volleyball, field hockey, dance team, and football for all of their dedication and teamwork this fall. Is the homemade beeswax with from the high school green team. I buy that every year and also make gifts out of the Hingham News and Parents lunchboxes as well. But many great items there, and just nice to be able to support our students in that way. And then finally, I did include a communication in your packet this evening from Desi, which provides some initial guidance on the impact of the recent vote on question to the ballot vote. But they have promised much more comprehensive guidance to be coming up to districts as we figure out our district-determined graduation requirements.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Moving over to item eight, communications. Katie reported on the communications received by the superintendent. Student communications, Slater?
Not much to report. Students at the high school are getting used to the new lunchline, and that's about it. And excited for the Hades Town early presentation later this week.
The new lunch?
Yeah, new lunchline organization. A few changes.
I may or may not have heard some buzz about that in my own household.
I may have heard about it too.
I get nothing. Yeah, now that my 16-year-old can drive, she doesn't tell me anything. All right, other communications, anything received by the school committee? Okay. Item nine, unfinished business. We do have a few items tonight. 9.1, 9.2, and 9.3 all relate to the dock. We had started talking about this at our last meeting, and Aisha's got an update for us. So I will let her to kick that off.
So we're excited because I think everything is coming together on the dock in terms of financing and in terms of construction as well. So tonight, there are three tasks that I need your help with as well, and I'll move along. First of all, to approve the contract for the dock. And secondly, to authorize our superintendent, acting superintendent, Katie Roberts, to sign the dock contract for construction. And once that happens, I think we actually have a construction meeting planned for Thursday, so that will get things going right away. Thirdly, and most importantly, is in terms of the financing of the dock project. As you know, the financing of this project is going to be done solely with Hingham Sports Partnership. And what they've done so far is that in terms of the overall cost of the project, the overall cost of the project comes to $1.5 million. Just open this up here. And in terms of the 1.5, $1,573,512, that includes all of the expenses, including the budget document that is attached to your folder. South Shore Bank and Hingham Sports Partnership. That tri-party arrangement is secured against a $200,000 line of credit with South Shore Bank, and the payments for that part of the, of that part of the, those payments will be made over three years by Hingham Sports Partnership. A third part of it is another pledge document, which is for $176,749 of pledges that have been received so far by Hingham Sports Partnership from community members. What Hingham Sports Partnership has done on behalf of those pledges, is that on behalf of those pledges that they've received, is to secure to us in writing this pledge, saying that if for any reason, one of the pledges was to default on the pledge, they would hold us harmless, basically. So in terms of that, we're very thankful and grateful to Hingham Sports Partnership for their involvement in this project in terms of construction, in terms of daily, weekly meetings, in terms of the financing, in terms of working with us along the way, in terms of getting those pledges put together, to make sure that we're very confident that in terms of all the financing, we will get the funds back and be able to enjoy, the kids will be able to enjoy the building.
And I echo what Aisha said, like, the team has been fantastic. They're just, yeah, on the phone with them all the time. So, yeah, I appreciate everything they've done for us.
Are we approving the grant from Senator Connor's office tonight, or are we holding on that?
The grant is not going to come to us. The grant is going to go to Hingham Sports Partnership. So we already approved the $1.5 million of the total grant from Hingham Sports Partnership. So I think the pledges, we just need to have your approval tonight, four things for approval, including the pledges to give the chair the authorization to sign the pledge on your behalf.
Any questions?
Nope. Okay. All right. I'll do one at a time here. All right. I will make a motion to approve two pledges from the Hingham Sports Partnership. One, to secure pledges to be received from Hingham Sports Partnership donors, and two, a tri-party pledge with South Shore Bank and Hingham Sports Partnership, secured against $200,000 line of credit, and to authorize the chair to sign these budgets on behalf of the school committee.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Sorry, I was waiting for a roll call vote. I didn't realize we're all here. Okay. I will make a motion. Uh, hold on. I'm missing one.
The warrant approval, 9.1.
This is the contractor one?
Yes, please.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the contract for construction bid for the dock. All right. To award the contract to construct the building, the dock, to Armal and Associates, and to authorize the acting superintendent to execute the contract on behalf of the school committee.
Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Right, that should be it.
Is that it?
Oh, we had three on here.
Superintendent?
Yeah, we just did that.
We just did that one. I combined the two.
We did everything.
Yep. Okay. All right. Thank you. All right. Wonderful. Okay. All right. So that takes us to 9.4, to discuss the purchase of electric school buses and act as appropriate. Again, I'll pass it over to Aisha. She's got an update for us. So just to remind you, we had talked about this. We got a presentation at our Saturday planning session. So Aisha's got an update.
And just as Mrs. Karanti mentioned, this is just an update in terms of where we landed from our last meeting. So we received, I don't know if you remember, but we had a presentation at our workshop where Highland Capital presented us with what electrifying in terms of infrastructure, in terms of lease, and in terms of a service plan. So we received that information, and in terms of the EPA's funding, one of the to-dos at that time was to request an extension from the EPA. That extension went out, and we did get a 90-day extension. But the extension was only for 90 days, and we have to continue requesting an extension every period until we get to April, because they just won't give us a full extension for the full state of time. So that's one. And secondly, one of the things that we have to do is to go out with an RFP, so that Highland Capital, although they've been working with us very closely, and they are not the vendor who definitively will be the chosen vendor, we have to go out to bid on that, and then to decide on who will actually be received, that will be the vendor who will move forward and provide those services to us. So at this point in time, I will, in the next couple of weeks, I will be, one of the things I'll be working on. And once that is done, I'll come back to you to let you know who has been selected into the RFP process, from the RFP process, and to also get your approval in terms of a warrant for town meeting. Once we know who the vendor is, we know what the pricing would be, and the structure of leases, I think we'll have enough information at that time to go, to actually have something in the warrants. I gave an example within the document I submitted to show you what the warrants typically look like for town meeting from what we've done in the past. It's not very, it just gives the lease, the lease length and what is being requested. There are no dollar amounts in there. That will be a separate decision that would have to be made by you. And in terms of that, I think it may be prudent to wait until we've gone out to bid and to get the final information on that, because at that point in time, we can then decide whether we want to go at five or seven, based on the actual pricing that we receive at that point in time. Okay. But so far from the initial pricing that we've seen from Highland, it looks like seven years may be the best to move forward with. But I think we should wait until we've chosen a vendor and we've seen everything that's out there.
That's a question?
Yeah.
Sure. When you go out to bid, will you request that, that there's similar contract lengths over comparing?
Yes.
So it's five to five or seven to seven years?
Yes. I think we'll ask for examples. In terms of similar, we viewed it, and be able to choose, I think we'll ask for pricing along the same lines as well. So right now, I've received like a few examples of others who have gone out to bid, just to see the structure of the RFPs that have gone out. And I'll probably piggyback off a few of them, just to get those out as soon as possible as well.
And then what is the date, the 90 days puts us up till for the extension?
It gets up to January. But I think we can even at the end of December ask for another 90 days again. Because they said every month you can request it. I think we're kind of looking at, yes, exactly. I think, I think too, that it's just changing times too, in terms of where we are right now. So I think in terms of making any decisions that are long-term, I think they're probably being prudent as well.
Yeah, I saw that they had changed, well, it was October, they announced the extension for the, was it the CARB Act? We thought it was going to be 2025, and they extended that to 2026.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
All right. Item 10, new business, to receive South Elementary School Improvement Plan and act as appropriate. Thank you for your patience and waiting.
Such an honor to be here this evening. So, and thank you to Gendre School. She's here as a South School support, which is great. Certainly for our school improvement plan, the first thing, we'll get it up. Not this time. It was, when we practiced, we practiced during executive session, and it worked.
Something happens when we go on Zoom and it stops.
All right. So first, I wanted to go ahead and recognize the school council members of the South School Committee, elementary school council members. We have Eugene Basiski, Vanessa Brier as our school staff members. For parents and guardians, we have Ashley Balakonas and Victoria Smythe. Our community member is Karen Johnson, and school committee liaison is Jen Benham. The school improvement plan, just to give you a little bit of background in the next slide, was actually drafted in the spring of 2024, and it was action-oriented with a vision of South for the future. And then what we did this year was, because this plan was for me to carry on, we met with the school council in the beginning just to review it and make sure it was still the same plan that we wanted to see moving forward for South School. In our next slide, you'll see that our theme for the year at South is what goes together grows together. We have started the year off, we had the school decorated for when students came in, just that theme of we are, as an admin team, new to the building. We want to grow together. Jen and I spent the first two months of school, September and October, getting into all classrooms to reach the students, and sort of promoted this theme through reading to them, just to say like, we're going to grow together, we're going to learn from each other, we're going to build relationships. So it was really nice, because in those two months, we were able to get into separately every single classroom in the school building, which was great. And one of the books that we read was What We'll Build. I think actually, Michelle, you might have gifted it to Mary at one point, so I had taken it with me. And we talked about, one of the poignant pieces of that book is, I'll build your future and you'll build mine. And we talked about that growth as a school community together. So it was really sweet to have that moment with the students. The South goals, I put them sort of to align here with the strategic plan. So there's a focus on academic excellence. There's a focus on healthy, equitable, and inclusive community, culture of collaboration within and beyond South Elementary, and then enhancing the home-to-school partnership. So you'll see on the next slide, our first goal for the school improvement plan is to is to ensure high expectations for teaching and learning for all South students. Our action steps here, I'm going to go ahead and just sort of review the ones in bold because those are the ones that I really wanted to make sure that we highlighted for the upcoming school year. So we're going to continue to provide literacy support to students in grades K to five with special attention to closing those gaps that exist while using the multi-tier system of supports that we have in place already. It's a pretty robust system in South School, the schedule is great because it offers that time for MTSS blocks, for some targeted reading intervention. And also with knowing that we're near two of inter-reading, it's been nice for the students to have those small group moments to go ahead and make sure that we are providing any support that's needed, whether it's for intervention or for enrichment purposes. The next action step to focus on here is to provide expanded math intervention to grades K to five using both reflex math and also the targeted math instruction blocks that are at each grade level. Um, Julie Chandler does a great job with our math interventionists within the building, getting into those classrooms and making sure that we are really targeting that math instruction for the students. And down in bold in number six, um, continue the support of the core reading program, which is inter-reading. Even though it is year two, certainly we are still spending time, we have our PLCs in the morning where students, uh, where teachers are able to meet with Chrissy Swanson for reading, Julie Chandler for math, um, and talk about all of the instruction that is taking place and areas where we might need a little bit more professional development, areas that are working really well for us for inter-reading and how it's sort of, um, that alignment also with the, the writing component that's taking place as well. For goal two, we have create a school environment where all students feel academically challenged, supported, and experience a sense of belonging, all while bringing awareness of student social responsibilities that take place within the school and then also extend beyond the school community. One of the things that we are working on this year is sort of looking at that positive behavior intervention supports, the PBIS model that was in place, um, over time, but sort of refining it and rebuilding it and bringing it back as a focus because it is a great style to have in the building, it's a systems sort of model. So when we build that school matrix, we are able to see that we have explicit instruction on behavior. Um, for example, as they, as you may have already heard and, and known, but when we talk about reading and math, we would teach the students their letters, their numbers, and then putting that together. But oftentimes with behavior, we just assume and we don't actually go back to those basics of explicitly teaching, what does this behavior look like and what is it that we want to see? And of course, I'm sure as, um, you're all familiar with the Buzz Awards and South School's school pledge and school motto, be kind, be responsible, be respectful, be kinder than necessary, be ready to learn is in there. So we're taking all of those components and sort of reworking them to make sure that they, eh, still work for the building and what are the tweaks that we might want to make moving forward. Number five, we have, we host, um, a South School Shine Night, this actually takes place in May, um, for children to share their collections, their talents, their hobbies. It incorporates the arts programming, it incorporates, um, our, the Get Smart About Art. We have some music programming that takes place that evening and that really does help bring the community together. It's a great night for students because they are able to really show off what is important to them and the things that are truly, they, they, I went last year while I was coming on board and I thought to myself, this is actually such a great night for students and that relationship building that takes place when I'm there and I'm seeing what interests them and where did that hobby come from or where did that talent come from? I realized we had a lot of bakers last year on, on the, the student population, it was really great to see. Um, a lot of students were able to describe, um, some students were really into sewing, crafting, it was really cute. Um, and again, those are small ways in which we create an environment where students feel safe, they feel welcome, they feel loved, and it allows them to be ready to learn. And then the last one that is bolded and highlighted is evaluate ways to have guided and organized stations at recess on a weekly basis and collaborate with our physical education teacher to continue to devote time on the schedule to teaching the playground rules, expectations at recess, and then a specific focus on grades four to five. Um, as you know, students are outside, it's a short block of time where we want them to expend their energy. It's also their time for social interaction. And we want to make sure that we are offering opportunities for students who may want something that is a little bit more organized in nature. And we also want to make an offer for students who want to play a game that might not be sustainable every day at recess, but we can with a little bit of help. One example for this year is the fifth grade students um, came to Mrs. Driscoll and myself and they really wanted to play football. So we talked about what football would look like at recess, um, what type of football they'd be playing, we developed a plan. And every day six, Mr. V is able to come out, we organize the game so that every student is involved and, and it really has been the students look forward to day six, you know when it's day six because those flag football things are getting, you know, they're going outside. But it's been really nice to see how the students are able to interact, they've built the plan together and then they follow through with it while they're outside. For goal three, goal three and goal four for us are all around collaboration, communication. And when I was looking at goal three and goal four, because there were some similarities between the two, I sought a, sort of saw goal three as being the how of communication and then you'll see in goal four being the what of our communication. So goal three, we have provide our caregiver community. Following to highlight continuous and new initiatives that supplement academic and social education. So right now we have that SMOAR newsletter, which goes out on a weekly basis to families. And this year we were able to incorporate Thrill Share, which we know is our new communication system platform that we're using as, as a town, which is great because I'm able to take this SMOAR newsletter, get it into Thrill Share, and then make sure that parents are receiving that not only through that email, but also notifications, text messaging, so that there's multiple ways for you to see that there is this communication out there and then it just helps to increase that engagement with it. Likewise, the Hingham Public Schools website, the live feed portion and the updates and news. So when you go into South School, you'll be able to see that that weekly newsletter is bookmarked there, it's live. So that way it's that first thing you can click on. And anything that's happening, we like to try to put it into that live feed section, which is on the, the right-hand side. Also collaborate with the communications director, Heather Cashman has been of great help to myself and Mrs. Driscoll being on board and reaching out to her from when we want to make sure that community. Things that are happening with inside the building. Goal four is to strengthen our community engagement and communication by fostering partnerships with our caregiver community in order to create an inclusive, positive learning experience for all students. So for this, I thought about when I had seen the steps, the action steps that were there in the school improvement plan. This is sort of the what, we have all of these different platforms that we can communicate out with, now what are we communicating out? Um, so we're trying to develop and we're working on developing parent communications that support students' academic, social, emotional progress, specifically using the common language, the philosophy of South School, adding a guidance and specialist section to our newsletter to continue to promote what we are doing behind the doors of South. And then also the continuation of toolbox and then some general parent information of things that have taken place that are, um, sort of highlights and, and traditions at South School. Next one is to continue to meet the needs of new families that are joining the South community, especially, but not limited to our kindergarten families, there's a great outreach that starts taking place in the spring. We have the families in, we have that screening process, that screening process that takes place. There's a lot of summer work that gets done, having those different moments where kindergarten students are able to, um, interact with one another through the PTO, organizing those events. Um, and then again, at the beginning of the school year, we had back-to-school nights for each, um, grade level and the way the model at South is that every family would meet with myself and Mrs. Driscoll and the team and then from there go and visit the classrooms. And the, one of the final highlights for this goal is to evaluate ways to distribute parent caregiver surveys that help to solicit feedback. We are at the point where we're sort of have our grounding, myself and Mrs. Driscoll at South and, you know, always meeting with parents and making sure that we are maintaining the pulse of, of what has been in place, any changes that, you know, might want, that parents might want to see, any changes that teachers might want to see, any changes that students might want to see, flag football was that big one from the slide before. Um, any ways that we can solicit feedback and have that two-way communication happening for us is great. And the final goal for our school improvement plan is to promote an increased awareness of safety in and around the school, especially during arrival and dismissal. So it was interesting to, with all of these pieces, to have the school improvement plan over the summer and read through it and then actually start seeing a lot of these things coming to life. Um, and this one is, was great because we were able to sort of be outside, we're observing arrival, dismissal, and making sure that we are maintaining a safe environment during those times. So we have our back-to-school safety protocols, we discuss them at all school assemblies, school-wide meetings. At our back-to-school nights, we discuss it, um, our communications to families. And then also what we would like to do is build up our caregiver coffee chats and then tie it into with increased participation at PTO meetings. Um, our PTO meetings take place usually the first Friday of the month in the morning and we want to increase that participation, so Mrs. Driscoll and I were thinking of ways that we could do that and that might be to have like a coffee chat, knowing that we're there, anything that they want to bring to the table. Um, it would be just a nice way to continue that safety, um, discussion. And the next thing on there is participation in monthly HPS security meetings so that we can continue to think of any changes that we might want to have take place, um, whether it's a physical plant or just signage, to make sure that we're always keeping safety and security at the forefront. One of the changes that we did make already with arrival is just streamlining the doors that students are accessing in the morning. So we actually have our front door for arrival and we use one of our side doors for arrival. So that way it's more streamlined and adults are at those doors instead of, you know, entering every grade level in previous years had had their own door that they would enter. So it's just been a good way because then we can actually get more adults on duties in those spots to really be greeting all kids and, you know, everybody's coming in, we're able to sort of have a pulse even on the school, students coming in and, you know, what they're bringing with them and, you know, triaging anything that we might want to see in the morning as well. So I know that I highlighted the emboldened ones, um, but certainly everything is, is a priority for us as we move along this school year. Um, and I'm sure that there may be some questions, so I'm happy to answer any.
Thank you very much. Does anybody have any questions? Michelle?
Question and a comment. Um, how are you and Mrs. Driscoll finding the transition, um, based on this fabulous presentation? It seems like it's going smoothly.
It really, it has been, right, it's been really nice because we, like I said, when we were reading through this in the summer and, and really taking stock of it, you don't know what these things look like at South. So it was so nice to actually unpack all of this and, and see everything sort of coming alive and, and flowing. So it actually has been a great transition and, you know, that's why I say, I'm like, I feel like our feet are kind of steady and, you know, every day we're just, you know, taking on different things, new things, trying to plan one or two days ahead. Uh, but everything's been going really well, thank you for asking.
That's great, that's, um, that's what I've been hearing from folks, um, parents, I've talked to a lot of families, so yeah, they said really easy transition, there were big, big shoes to fill and, and a lot of changes, but it does sound like things are going really quite well, so.
Yeah.
Very nice.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep, and I will, I go to what Michelle says and I also just want to point out, I really like how you, um, use that fifth grade leadership with the fifth graders every six days for football. I think it, it's a great way to have the kids advocate for something that they want and then the kind of teaching, having them get involved and learning, you know, what, how to make a plan going forward for something like that, that's great.
Yeah, it's, and I think what's really nice too is that they see that that it can work and then how do they bring that actually to the younger grades to sort of be those role models and saying, okay, well, if you want to do this, what can you do? We can, you know, you, fourth graders was, the next thing is, um, fourth graders were promoting new soccer nets. So they did a great job, they convinced us, um, Jen did a mini grant for PTO, so new soccer nets are on their way. So it's really nice to see that they have, that they, they see that their voice is being heard as well.
Yeah, that's great.
Yeah.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'd just like to say that we're thrilled to welcome Tara and Jen to the team and, uh, been a, been a great year so far.
Yeah.
Thank you for all your work.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then the second graders can bring in those baked goods that you're talking about. Eat some, I want to try some.
Find him a bake sale.
Not a bad idea, Michelle.
All right. Want to make a motion?
Sure. I will make a motion to, uh, to be accepting.
I think we already did it.
Um, it's just.
That's twenty-four.
That's a, that's a new, that's a new one. Accepting. All right, I will make motion to approve the South Elementary School Improvement Plan for the years 24 to 26.
I will second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. All right, ten point two to receive the class of 2023 College Board Testing and Placement Report.
And I just need to, before we introduce Heather, I have a mea culpa. So I was under the impression that all of the data had been received through the college board, not understanding that some of the subgroup data is actually channeled through DESI. You might have noticed, uh, two blank spaces in your document and, uh, that was my overeager to get this, uh, report out. And so Erica will, um, share that out as soon as we receive it, um, from DESI and so didn't want you to think that was any mistake on Heather's part, that is all me, so.
We just wanted, thank you Katie, uh, we just wanted to highlight and leave the charts in there blank in the report that you got so you knew like exactly what was going to come in the future. So that was purposeful. Um, so hi, everyone, thanks for having me again, good to see everyone. Um, so tonight's report is about college testing and placement. Um, you will see, uh, some of the data that I present is based on the cohort graduating class and some of it is based on testing that happened in that school year, so may include more than the graduating class of 2024. So I'll try and highlight that or I can clarify, um, as we go through. It's also a snapshot of where we are. Um, data is amazing, but it's also just one part of what we do. We have a bunch of, um, amazing students in our building and they do things that are not captured in this report, so this is just a little bit of the flavor of what happens in terms of, um, these particular measures. So the class of 2024 Future Plan is, is the most popular next step for our student with about ninety-two percent, um, sorry, ninety-one percent going on to four-year colleges. On to two-year or specialized schools, so specific training in a specific area or to a community college or associate's degree granting institution. Um, one point seven are going to prep schools, typically, typically those are people, um, who either feel like they're just not quite ready to leave high school, they might want to solidify their academics for some reason. Um, or we will have some students who are seeking an opportunity in sports and they want to mature physically as well as academically and so they might do a prep year. Um, we have close to two percent going on straight to employment or doing apprenticeship for a trade, which, so the apprentice. Which, so the apprentice year, most of those kids doing a gap year are going to go on to some sort of education. After that, they're just taking a year to either do a service project or concentrate on earning more money for school or whatever it is, or some of them are just making a decision as to what their next step is going to be. And then we have another one percent that is truly undecided and they don't have firm plans when they leave us. All right, so that's just represented graphically and that gives you kind of, um, five years of history. So you can see that it's pretty similar from year to year. College going is a little bit up for four-year college going this year, but it's pretty steady within the past five years and the decade as well. This graph just gives us kind of like the trend line on each group. So we see that undecided ticked up a little bit, but again, um, it looks like a big line, but that goes from like point five percent to one percent and that's a couple of kids. So, um, we just wanted to kind of represent what's going on graphically there because it's a little bit easier to see. Then when we talk about our population of students who are applying to colleges and where they're applying, we see overlap in the schools that are applied to and the ones that are most attended. But we are, um, it's always a counseling department goal to kind of track where our kids are applying and see trends so that we can make sure we educate ourselves if we, you know, um, in the past several years, we've seen a lot of southern schools become more popular. So we want to make sure that we're keeping up with what the southern schools are doing. I was looking at this when I was preparing the report and Ohio is starting to be, um, popular as is Indiana. So we're like, okay, are we doing a Midwest swing now? So we just want to make sure that we're staying on top of the trends so that we're knowledgeable about where our students want to apply and can help them expand, um, the breadth of where they apply if they so choose. So we have UMass Amherst, Syracuse, Elon, UNH, UVM. As the most applied to schools, you can see all of those there. And then our next slide gives us, they applied. Sometimes we will see a trend in the expansion of where they're applying before we see an expansion of where they're actually going. But UMass and Syracuse are the first two there. Ohio pops up there with Miami University. And we are seeing some of the southern schools kind of creep up into the numbers of where our students are going. So, um, I think people are looking for some warm weather. They also tend to be a little bit less expensive, some of the southern schools, so that's always attractive to families as well. Then we like to see not only the individual schools where our students go, but are there trends in terms of areas of the country? So most of our kids are staying in Massachusetts. And then New York, Pennsylvania, Connecticut, and Ohio and North Carolina round out kind of the top five areas of where our kids choose to attend school. And then you can see kind of the graphic line with all the different states that they actually go to. So there's a big range, um, but a concentration of where they land. All right, SAT scores. Our SAT scores have remained just about where they have been in the last several years. So for the critical reading and writing, we had a mean score of six eighteen. Again, this is between one and, um, not one, sorry. Up to sixteen hundred, up to eight hundred in each subtest. So there are, we're back down to two subtests, the reading and writing and the math. And those are between zero and eight hundred. So we have a mean score of six eighteen as compared to five sixty-three in the state and five oh seven in the nation. When we look at the math, math scores, we have a six hundred, five forty-five in, uh, Massachusetts and four eighty-seven in the nation. And then the composite score twelve eighteen for Hingham compared to eleven twenty for the state and nine ninety-four nationally. So our students are doing well with tests, um, for the SAT in particular. We can see the trend is pretty consistent. The little bump in two thousand twenty-one was one of the years where most schools, because of COVID, were still test optional, which meant most of them did not need or expect a test. And so you saw a bump in mean score because the only kid, not the only, but most of the kids who were taking it felt that that was a very, very strong score for them. So they wanted to take it even though they didn't need to, just to help their admissions. Admissions trend in the past couple of years, the pendulum is starting to swing back a little bit to everybody being test optional, to starting to require some tests. It was led by MIT, it's been followed by a couple more Ivy League schools. So as we meet each other again in the coming years, we'll see if that fully swings back and generalizes to more of the schools or if it stays more of a, um, elite college Ivy League type of situation. So those are our SAT scores. The ACT is also a college entrance test. It is just given by a different company than the college board. It tends to be a little more achievement and content-based versus reasoning-based. And so students, um, can take either one. Colleges in the country really don't care which test, if they want an entrance test, um, they will take either one. So it really, um, students should play to their strengths. And that's why we offer in the sophomore year a pre-ACT, so they get exposure to taking a test of the ACT type. And then the PSAT when they're juniors, so they have exposure to both types without them counting. They're just practice tests, so they can decide for them which one feels better for me. For the vast majority of students statistically, they will score very similarly on both tests. But there are some kids who one just feels a lot more comfortable, the style of the test, um, than the other. And so they may choose to just take one or the other. We have some kids that take both and then compare their score. So it's really, um, a conversation with the student, their counselor, their family to see what they're comfortable with. So if you look at our scores, sorry, do you mind going back to the? We, in English, our mean was twenty-nine point possible thirty-six. So scored very differently, but we continue to do really well. I think where you see the score go down again, we had, um, a little spike in the number of kids taking the test. And now it's kind of, as test optional has become a little more popular, fewer kids have taken the test. So we'll see in the next coming years if that becomes a little bit more popular. So then the graph is our next one. Thank you. We're going up, so that's good, but we've been fairly consistent. All right, our next testing cadre is advanced placement exams. These exams are three or four-hour exams in specific subjects. We offer a wide variety of AP classes at the high school. Depending on how a student scores, the exams, you can score between one and five on an exam. Three is considered proficient. And depending on how a student scores and which college they choose to matriculate at, the college may give them college credit for a particular score. We're seeing more colleges requiring a four or a five on an exam in order to award credit. We're also seeing fewer colleges giving credit, um, and letting that not be made up once you get to the school. So in the past, you may have come in with five AP scores and earned credit and matriculated as a sophomore. Now we're seeing colleges, um, say, that's great. You can take more advanced classes, but you still have to take the same number of classes. So they're not letting you kind of become a sophomore. They're just letting you start in more difficult classes. So we had six hundred and fourteen exams taken by three hundred and twenty students. We had twenty-five classes offered at the high like the graduating class cohort versus everyone who took an AP exam. Fifty percent, fifty-seven percent of students took an AP exam in their senior year. All right. We'll go into demographics in a minute because we do have that data. The college board and the, and DESI kind of break down all the subgroups for the SAT. And that takes a little bit of time, whereas the AP program, all of that is available now. So these are some of the offerings that we have in AP land. All the different breadth and variety of classes that we have. And we're, um, very thoughtful, like environmental science is a new class. So as new AP classes come up or classes that have been offered that we haven't offered before, um, that have existed. If we have a cohort of students that are interested, we try and have conversations and see what, are there any more AP classes that we would like to, um, offer to our students? The next slide is AP enrollments. This just kind of gives you a snapshot of who takes what. Statistics usually has the most amount of kids in it. But environmental science, even though that was new, that was very, 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 very popular, which is why we added it because we knew there was a lot of demand for it. English and US history and Euro are always very popular. So you can kind of see which, um, classes most of our students take. Then moving on to the demographics, this just kind of breaks everything down by subgroup. When you have fewer than ten students, we don't report any norms so that we can't identify individual kids. But we do pretty well in terms of mean score. It's pretty close no matter what subgroup you're in. So that's good. It's pretty consistent. One thing that I do want to point out is when you talk about, um, students with disabilities taking high-level classes, AP, um, we had thirty-eight students with disabilities take sixty-eight exams last year. We had, one of those students wasn't on, on an active IEP, the rest were on five oh four plans. And we had ten students of those kids on five oh fours, ten of them had had an IEP previously. So by the time that they were in the senior year taking the exams, they were no longer on an IEP, but they had that in their history. So just want to point that out. The next slide tells us the kind of trajectory of where we're going in terms of number of students who hit the proficiency level, a score of three. And so jumped up last year, which was great. And then AP scholars, um, the college board will give students certain designations if you take a num, certain number of AP exams and score at a of at least three point two five and a three or higher on four or more exams. Scholar with distinction is an average grade of at least three point five on all exams taken and grades of three or higher on five or more exams. They used to have a couple more levels, but they were seeing that that was adding to students' stress and encourage, encouraging them to kind of overextend and take a number of AP exams that wasn't quite, it was just causing a little too much stress and anxiety. So they took out the higher number of exam awards to have people focus on where they actually felt comfortable and not overextend. You will see the AP Seminar and Research Certificate. So there's a two-class series, AP Seminar and AP Research. And that, um, we start AP Seminar, you can enter that in your sophomore year if you would like. It's available all years, but that's the first time a student can take it. And it really looks at problem solving, researching and creativity. And so it will give a general, um, theme and prompt to students. And then they learn how to research and present on their angle of that particular subject, um, or theme. So you will see a lot of variety in that. And so that's been a very, very popular series of classes for our students. And it also really helps them learn how to do research, which is really the basis of college-level work. So that's great. And they have, you can own a capstone, earn a capstone diploma if you do that two-class series. So we've had four students do that and twelve didn't quite hit the diploma, but they took both of the classes and they got the research certificate. So twelve of our students were honored in that way. This graph just kind of shows AP scholars and how we've gone in the past several years graphically. And then National Merit Scholarship, um, there's two thresholds, a commended student and a semifinalist. And that's based on your PSAT scores in your junior year. So if you score within a certain high percentage of the students in your state, you can get recognized as a semifinalist. Or you can be commended. So last year, this year we happen to have a couple, but all, I won't, it's a spoiler alert for next year. So we had three percent of the class this year that was honored with National Merit Scholarship opportunities. That kind of shows the graph a little bit differently. And then I added one slide that didn't make it into your presentation because I was just doing some thinking and did a last-minute slide add. So we've been thinking as a district, how do we expand college-level work access to more students? And we have, um, used the dual enrollment program. We have, um, Quincy College and then, oh, is it? With them. So here you see for this school year, so this is not last year's graduating class cohort, but this is this school year. We offer dual enrollment classes in each of these areas. Now what happens with that, the really quick dual enrollment primer? Every student taking that class is in the dual enrollment and they are eligible to apply for dual enrollment credit. So that is college credit and high school credit at the same time by taking the same course. So they're Hingham High School's courses, they're not anyone else's courses. We've partnered in, with the most part Quincy College. And so Quincy College has said, yes, what you submitted to us would earn credit for us. So, um, they, everyone sits in the class, they take it, it's dual enrollment. It's considered college level in terms of being able to earn dual enrollment credit. And then the student can choose, and it's at the very end of the year, I think like May thirtieth might be the deadline. They can choose to pay for college credits and get the college credit. So not every student in the class is going to do that, but every student got the same opportunity by, just by sitting in the classroom. So that's a way where you're not in an AP class, but you're still getting exposure to some college-level work.
And I'll interject and say that the college credits are about as inexpensive as they come.
Oh, yes.
So it's a really nice opportunity for kids to save a little bit of money.
Yes.
I have a question about that. So you've mentioned with the AP courses that some, more and more schools are saying, okay, that's great, you're coming in, we're not going to give you credits. So, but you're going to start at higher level courses. Is it different with this? Like, do, do those credits translate into you go to the school and?
It depends on the college that you go to. So you've earned credit at Quincy College and then Quincy has a list of schools that take their college credit. So the student has to then approach the college that they're matriculating at and say, I have this dual enrollment credit, will you accept it? And sometimes it could depend on the student's major, it could depend on the particular class. I, I noticed a, a boo-boo on the report. We have kids taking sociology and psychology. We actually have a large number of kids taking psychology and sociology. And somehow those got wiped to zero. So I can, um, update that tomorrow and get you those numbers, but those are very popular classes.
It's adding to your numbers.
Yeah. Yeah.
So this, the dual enrollment, is that any level, like, does it have to be honors? Does it fit that, or is it any level?
It kind of depends on the course that we offer. So like all level three pre-calculus, college prep, sorry, um, pre-calculus classes are dual enrollment. Our biotechnology, it's level two and level three, so honors and college prep together. Yeah, so it kind of depends, but it's not just, it's, depends on the class and which level it is for us, yeah.
I just wanted to explain the process for getting a course certified. We have to submit, um, our full syllabus. And, you know, I know, for example, for our biotechnology course, we actually, it turns out, use the very same book used in the college classes, do all of the same labs. We had to make zero adjustments to, um, our, our science curriculum because there was a nearly identical, um, overlap. And so, um, the same is true of the other courses as well. So, um, we can say with confidence that we're off, offering college-level, um, courses and material because, um, there's so much overlap in the approach.
So those classes are taught here in the district by our teachers.
Yeah, so our teachers needed to go through an application process where they had to submit their credentials, submit their syllabus and so on. And, um, so it's our teachers teaching the very same course that we have always taught. But they've been certified as instructors at Quincy College or UMass or, uh, at, uh, Middlesex. But they've been certified as instructors at Quincy College or UMass or at Middlesex. And we had to get the curriculum credentials as well, so.
I just wanted to add a thank you. I know you guys have been working really hard and just from last year to this year, you've added a lot of classes to that dual enrollment list. And having a senior, I know that for many of them, this was an excellent way to have that college credit and that pride that they got that college credit without the intensity of the AP option. And it's been, I mean, for us, it's been a great option to have and kids are excited about it.
That's great. That's exactly what we intended.
One is that students can figure out which colleges they're going to cross-reference the Quincy College list before making that payment, which is excellent. And then the other point I just wanted to make is that we'll continue to expand that list as we can, so.
And then I think our next slide is just a thank you and to see if you have any additional questions.
No? Amazing.
Yeah, of course.
Thank you for this overall. And thank you for giving the data on the IEP. I just wanted to make sure I understood it. So it was one, it, within the senior class.
Yep.
One student that's on an active IEP.
Yep.
Is taking an AP class.
That was last year, right.
Last year's.
Yes.
Ten people, students that had, have, last year, had an existing five oh four, had a previous IEP?
It was.
Or just in general, ten people that?
So, no, it was the, so thirty-eight total students with disabilities. One of those was an active IEP. Thirty-seven of them were active five oh four plans.
Okay, I thought you said something around ten.
So, yeah, so of the thirty-seven that were active five oh four plans, ten of those students had previously, before they were on a five oh four plan, been on an IEP at some point during their schooling with us.
Okay, and there may have been, which is fine, you have the data, but there may have been other students that were on an IEP at some point that aren't currently on a, weren't on a five oh four, but then had thirty-eight and wouldn't show up in that data. I'm trying to get, because this is definitely a common question that comes around.
Yeah.
So I'm not asking that we have to get that. I guess I'm trying to say, is that, is it fair to say that there's a possibility that, you know, someone that in first grade through third grade was on IEP and wasn't on a five oh four, let's say, since third grade?
Yes.
Now was a senior last year.
Yes. That is absolutely possible. I haven't drilled that much into that, but that is possible, yeah. But those, those were students, that number is students who had approved accommodations by the College Board, which means they were on an active plan, right? So there could be kids who no longer have any accommodations whatsoever, who had been on some sort of plan and, right, exactly.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's a great question. Thanks.
I'd also like to add just one other point, and that is I'd love to take a look at our dual enrollment.
Yeah.
And see how many students, you know, currently on IEPs are enrolled in those classes. On the other thing too, is on a college application, there is a section for listing not only AP courses, but also for listing dual enrollment courses. So if you do very much get credit for being enrolled in the college level courses that we offer.
Yep. Great. Thanks, everyone.
All right. Ten point three. I thought we could talk about bosses again. Sorry about that. I moved it up to unfinished business and forgot to take it off here. So we are not talking about it again.
We didn't like what happened at nine point four.
Ten point four, to approve grants and donations and act as appropriate. I did see that we had some.
Yeah, so I have two grant award notices, which I just realized I did put a date on, so you can imagine that it's today's date, that the smell is being, is being put forward. The first one is for our SA grants, it's the Every Student Succeeds Act. Title one, we received seventy-six thousand, four hundred and eight dollars. That money is intended to close educational achievement gaps. That's the purpose of title one. Only one eligible private school requested title one funds, and that is the New England Hebrew Academy. They'll get three thousand, five hundred and four dollars and ninety-five cents. Title two is meant to increase student achievement, improve teacher effectiveness and increase the number of teachers and leaders who are effective in improving student academic achievement. And to provide low-income and minority students with greater access to effective teachers. Title four is meant to support well-rounded educational opportunities, safe and healthy students. And to support effective use of technology, we will get ten thousand dollars in title four funding. And we will share some of those funds, fifteen hundred approximately, with Notre Dame, Old Colling, Montessori and St. Paul's. The next one, same deal, is our Perkins Grant. The, the code is called Strengthening Career and Technical Education Secondary. We've been approved for seventeen thousand, five hundred and seventy-five dollars from that grant. And we will use those funds to further our pilots of PAFES programs.
Thank you. We approve, do we make, I don't think we do.
I think we do have to. It seems weird because they are part of a government program that technically.
Can I ask a question about that one? Is New England Hebrew Academy in Hingham?
No, so title one, the pro share is different for title two and four than it is from title one. So title one is based on your residence. Whereas the pro share for title two and title four is for students who attend local private schools.
Great, thank you.
All of the entitlement funds do something a little bit different. It's interesting, so.
Do you want to motion for each title?
Do you want to?
This is more of a notification.
This is more of a notification. We've shared information in the past about the amount that you'll see it. So it's more of a notification to you that, that we have received these dollars, so.
Okay, okay, all right, thank you.
All right, ten point five, to approve surplus and act as appropriate. I did see a few there.
Yeah. So for those, I think the librarians at Foster, the other elementary schools, as well as the high school are doing a little bit of cleaning up. So we've been receiving every week more items for, for decommissioning, including books that are no longer in circulation, that are damaged. And so they've provided a list here for, for those books for your approval. And in terms of the maintenance department, they're also doing a little bit of cleanup as well in terms of making space for the foster building stuff that we want to keep. We've had desks and chairs and everything from the middle school, the old middle school. So we're trying to get rid of a lot of that to make space. And there've been storage in some places that have not been the most safe as well. So we're getting rid of all of those. And we're happy to see that Mr. Mian got a company to actually give us a dumpster for free and they're converting all the metal. So we may get some checks back for the metal that has been converted. So it should be a nice way to clean up and to.
Environmentally friendly.
And then to recycle at the same time, right?
Do you want to have the name of a furniture company? Give them a shout out.
Definitely.
All right.
I will make a motion to declare surplus library books from the Hingham High School library. And for elementary schools listed and to authorize the high school and elementary librarians to dispose of them at the least cost to Hingham.
I will second.
Any discussion? Matt, you look like you wanted to say something.
Nope.
Hi, you pose?
Okay, thank you.
And then the maintenance.
That's right, I wasn't sure.
I will make a motion to declare surplus items listed above and to authorize the executive director of Business Support Services to dispose of them at the least possible cost to the district.
I will second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
You pose? Okay, thank you. Thank you.
All right, moving over to item eleven, Subcommittee and Project Reports and More on Sign. Matt?
So we will, we are in the process of scheduling our special education subcommittee meeting. It will take place one of the first two weeks in December, in advance of our school committee meeting on the sixteenth, where we'll be getting an update from Student Services. E-School Council had our meeting today, this afternoon. I missed it, so Jonathan said he would provide me an update. And Haff had their monthly meeting last week.
Carrie?
Middle School Council meeting next Monday. So last, last week, the week before last, Tim and Alan and I went to the MAS C conference. It was great, as always, attended a number of interesting panel discussions and got some good takeaways to bring back to the subcommittees. The title line with the new regs and collective bargaining. And the theme of the conference seemed to be communication. And kind of the general session was on how to listen effectively. And also to have discussions with people who might have different worldviews and a way that everyone keeps their dignity. It kind of reminded me of the book, the high conflict book that we all read last year. And if anyone's interested in it, it's called The Dignity Index. And it was kind of just a way to frame those discussions and, and think about things when you disagree with someone. So it was really interesting to read. And then it was, it was nice to see a familiar face. There is a panel on school and municipal collaboration and John Ferris was a panelist. So it was fun to go and support him and hear about that. The resolutions all passed, so the expired, expiring resolutions were approved as a slate. The School Bus Armed Surveillance Act and the expansion and capacity, the VOTAC program, so it was passed without any debate. There were a couple of minor amendments to the other ones, but, but it was good. And it was, it was very well-run this year. It was under two hours, so.
Under two hours. Michelle?
Just a high school council meets to Wednesday, meets on Wednesday.
Ally?
Well, Carrie, I did the update from MAS C, but Carrie, Tim and I did kind of split up some of the different sessions. So I attended a few on belonging and inclusion, which were really good. And same, I'll type out some of my notes and share with anyone appropriate.
Thanks.
Just that there are warrants in the packet.
As Katie mentioned, Jen and I went with Ayesha and Katie to the Town Governance Academy last week to talk about the school department. I'm going tomorrow to talk about the school committee. So they're talking about governance tomorrow, so I'll do like a ten-minute spiel for them tomorrow, which was really nice. It was great. It was, you know, about ten people. It was, they had some good questions. And that's all I had to report. All right, so item twelve, anything under forty-eight hours? We've got our next two school committee meetings, December second at six thirty and then Monday, December sixteenth at six thirty. And with that, I will take a motion to adjourn.
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
I will second.
All those in favor?
Hi.
We're adjourned.